Assist in the presentation if need be and to answer any questions. So Becky, can you go to the first, second slide please? The agenda for this presentation are as follows. We will be providing the board member and the community, board members in the community, the budget priorities for the 2021 school year, new directives from the governor, which were released on March 27th. Budget calendar if budget vote is held on June 2nd. And we all understand that there hasn't been any definitive date as to when the board's budget vote will need to take place, but we're sort of projecting it may be June 2nd. And if it is, we have a budget calendar to match that. State aid update, based upon the information that we received this past Thursday, there's been some updates to the amount of state aid that the district will be receiving. Budget matrix to display the tax impact scenarios. We wanted to make sure that as we are looking to put forward a budget to the board to vote on and then subsequently our community to vote on, that we're also thinking about the tax implications to each of the budget models that we will be providing. And we have a slide for that. We want to share with you some recent budget development activities, next steps. And then of course, we want to have open discussions for our board members to be able to ask any questions of us related to the process as well as related to some of our projections. Becky, next slide please. So the budget priorities, some of which we've already shared with you. But we want to make sure that in each meeting, we are revisiting things that have already been shared to reinforce things that are challenging to the school district. As we stated, the 2018-2019 budget was overstated and overspent by $4.3 million, which has some implications to what we're dealing with today. The 2019-2020 budget is also understated and does not accurately reflect the assumptions for staffing. And we need to make sure that in our budget process moving forward, that all of this is corrected. Of course, as we stated before, there are a number of key positions that are not in place at this point in time at the cabinet level as well as at the school level, which we will need to fill and those will be reflected in the 2021 budget. As we stated during our last presentation, that the City of Poughkeepsie School District has received state allocation for community school models for the past several years. And in my evaluation of the district from A to Z, unfortunately, what I've been able to ascertain is that our community school initiative has not been one that is reflective of great community schools initiatives across the state. And it's important that as we move forward as a school district, that we are developing the community schools initiative in the Poughkeepsie City School District to not only meet the expected requirements of the state, but also to sort of exceed any sort of community school model that you will find in the state of New York. The state aid runs released on April 1st, decrease our state aid by $1.5 million for this upcoming school year. And of course, another challenge is that due to the loss of grant funding, there are certain positions that will need to either be cut from the budget or assumed within this upcoming year's budget. So Becky, can you go to the next slide? And while Becky is transitioning, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hogan.
Good afternoon. So I think by now everyone is probably familiar with this, but the governor signed an executive order and postponed board elections to at least June 1st. And as well, the budget, public referendum of the school budgets is also postponed to at least June 1st. It will likely be either the first, second, or there's another one the second Tuesday. You know, a lot of things are being changed every day, so we're not really sure. Fine.
Becky, if you can move to the next slide please?
Okay, so this is a sample and you'll notice in a couple areas, there's date ranges. But this is a sample on the right column, June 2nd, of what our budget calendar would look like if shifted to June 2nd. So at this point, we're going to be planning for that. But I do notice if you look at the last line, May 11th would be the last date for the board to approve the budget. We have a board meeting scheduled on April 28th, which is primarily just to do with the BOSI budget. It's a short meeting, but you may want to add some time on that to discuss the budget. And then your first meeting in May is the 6th. So that is probably when you would be adopting the school budget on the 6th, because your next one is later than the 11th. Okay, next slide. Becky? So the state aid runs were revised and we took a $1.5 million deduction in foundation aid. And then there's also new language in the bill that states that any COVID-19 aid that the school district receives will essentially be deducted from our state aid. That's $2.2 million that, which essentially the state is taking those federal funds from us because they have such a calamity at the state level financially. And then the last nuance in this bill is unprecedented, but the state budget director can actually make mid-year adjustments to state aid. And as you can imagine, that's incredibly hard for school districts to deal with. Typically, once you have all the students placed in classrooms, they're familiar with your teacher, it's very difficult and there's all kinds of contractual issues to try to make big reductions mid-year. But so essentially, they're going to wait and see how the state revenues come in with sales tax, income tax, et cetera, and gauge, it looks like quarterly, whether or not they can even pay the aid they, on the aid runs they just gave out on April 1st. And actually, if you look at it from our viewpoint, we lost the $1.5 million in foundation aid, but essentially, we lost the $2.2 million of COVID-19 aid as well, because when received, that's going to be deducted so much they may. Next slide please. So this is where we are on the revenue side right now. And the budget, the revenues are 102. essentially $3 million on the top line. We may be able to allocate a half million of fund balance because we're not spending money in a few areas right now because the schools closed, substitutes, hourly people, et cetera. So we're looking at right now, our revenues look to be about 102.8 million. This really has only changed a couple hundred thousand since the last briefing. And it decreased by 1.5 million because of the foundation aid, as I mentioned. But it also, we're going to be getting some additional BOSI's aid because we need to make a BOSI's capital project payment. And that payment is 1.9 million and that will generate about 3, 1.3 million in aid. So essentially, it's a net $600,000 cost to us. It is possible to actually bond and borrow that payment to BOSI's next year of 1.9 million. But the disadvantage to that is our $50 million capital project is right to the debt ceiling. So if we borrowed 1.9 million for this BOSI's capital payment, it's a BOSI's capital project and we have to pay up for a round of share, then our 50 million would exceed the debt cap. So we essentially would need a 60% majority vote or about 1.9 million of that project would get no aid. So, you know, if we voluntarily chose to reduce the project. So that's the change here on this page, truly a net, when you consider everything, about a couple hundred thousand dollar change. But it would be minus 1.5 million had we not gotten the BOSI's aid, which is directly related to the BOSI's capital payment we need to make. Next slide please. So this is just something I wanted to share with you that just looks at the different levels and the tax impact of if we set our budget expenditures on the second column. The first number is 107 million. What would be the implications of that, of a tax combination of a tax levy?
Excuse me, Mr. Hogan?
Yes?
Can you speak into the microphone, please? Yeah, thank you.
I'll bring it closer.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so sure. This table shows essentially if we set the expenditures at, right today, at 107 million, that would result in a 14 and a half percent tax levy increase, which we know is not feasible. We're probably more towards the bottom line, which if you look at the last column, 2.75 million, that's essentially, we need to cut somewhere in that range to bring this budget in around 4.9 or 5%. So, you know, the big takeaway, kind of where are we today? We need about 2.7 to 3 million dollars in further reductions, which is a big number because we've overcome a lot of things already, you know, starting with a budget that wasn't really accurate. So that's really all I wanted to show on this page. Next slide please. So one of the things we have to look at is when we look at having to make reduction in budget. As this slide indicates, in our current budget, 73% of our entire budget is for salaries and benefits. It sounds high, it is on a little on the high side, but it's not totally out of whack because generally, you're going to find most school districts are probably in the 70% range. So we're a little high. I suspect that's because of our health benefits. We currently pay 100% of retiree benefits plus 100% of Medicare Part D premium reimbursement. So that's probably inflating your overall costs for staffing overall. I don't think there's, there's got to be less than a handful of districts in the state that actually have that. Usually retirees contribute something to retirement. So I suspect that's where that issue is. But essentially, we don't like to go to staffing and it always looks like if people watch us from the outside, we go to staffing first. But as this slide shows you, you can't avoid not carefully reviewing staffing when you're looking at having to make large reductions in the budget, because that's where all the money is. In our case, 73% of our money is in salaries and benefits. So those are the areas we have to look at. We don't necessarily go there first, but we know we have to look at it. And it doesn't really matter in which order, especially when we have challenges of the magnitude we have here. Next slide please.
And real quick, Bill, Bill, you're going in and out, so I'm not certain if your microphone is positioned correctly, but if you can adjust for that?
All right, I will hold it up. So the next slide, I've spent quite a bit of time on staffing analysis and I really was looking at it from two different angles. Not at the elementary, but at the secondary level, you want to make sure teachers have five assignments, because that's a full-time equivalent. So there was that analysis at the secondary level. And then also for the elementary and the secondary level, looking at class sizes, you have to take into account the integrated classrooms are less sized, smaller sizes, and especially special ed classrooms are mandated by certain sizes, whether it's 15, 12, 8, 6. So those have to be kind of segregated and looked at separately. So when I initially went through all of this, I actually was finding approximately 40 positions with everything. And then when I really started pushing and asking for verification and it just seemed like there was finding too much, it turns out that the data really wasn't pulling everything that I needed to see. For example, one person looked like they had one assignment, they were basically one assignment instead of five a day. When I brought these large exceptions, actually, there were two or three of those, to the programmer, it was like, oh no, they have other assignments, they just didn't show up on that report. So we kind of have been doing some back and forth with that the last couple days. But I think I have good data now and I'm going to run through the analysis again and that'll be my priority this week. The next slide indicates next steps. Again, my focus is going to be on staffing levels. I'm going to also look at some of our larger vendors and also I've done some preliminary work on the BOSI's contract, but I'm trying to validate that we're actually using all the services that we have contracted for. With all the staff turnover, it's likely that some things were just rolled over into future contracts year by year and someone may have ordered that service, you know, two people ago in a position. So I've reached out to the two larger BOSI's we use and just asked them if they could look at and verify that we're actually using these, some of these services. We'll also continue to look at all the other expenditure areas. And Dr. Rosser is continuing to work on the community schools initiative. And as you stated, 2.5 million is allocated for that. We're supposed to be devoting that to that program. In the past, we haven't, we've just been using it in the general ledger. So the challenge here to try to lessen the negative impact of having to do this with all the other obstacles, is trying to reprogram and maybe reassign and move current staffing to the degree that's valid into that. So we don't have to go out and spend 2.5 million of new money. We can spend less than that if we can reassign and change the functions of some staff. We're never going to absorb it all, but we can do some of that. So with that, Dr. Rosser, if you'd like to continue.
Yeah, so next slide please. Becky, so board members, you know, this is an opportunity for you to ask any questions, make any comments. Myself, Bill, and as I mentioned, I also have Mr. McDowell, who has been a great asset to, you know, the team of Bill and I in helping to move a lot of things forward in the business office. Questions?
There's no questions. Dr. Rosser, there's no questions?
Oh, there's no questions? Okay. Well, this concludes our reports for this board meeting. As I've shared previously, we are committed to making sure that we are providing the board and the community with frequent updates on the process. Myself, Mr. Hogan, and Mr. McDowell, you know, will be meeting virtually over the next course of the week. We're planning to have conversations with our collective bargaining units to share with them, you know, exactly where we're at financially, so that they have an awareness of what needs to be done. And we're going to be seeking their collaboration, but being able to realize the necessary cuts in order to bring in a balanced budget that is appropriate to take out for our taxpayers to vote upon. So more information will be provided at our next board meeting. If there's any questions that board members may have between now and then, you know, please feel free to reach out to myself and I will best attempt to answer the question. And if I'm not able to answer the question, I will most certainly seek an answer for the question to be able to be responsive to our board members.
Thank you, Dr. Rosser. I just wanted to say that I am happy that the 2.5 million for community schools is being implemented and looked at to be implemented and executed with efficacy. So I'm super excited about that. I know that you have a strong background in your interview and process, some of the things that you stated were right in sync with the community schools model. So I'm glad that we have someone in leadership that understands what our community school looks like and is going to use those dollars the way that they really should be used, that they were intended to be used. So thank you so much. We're going to move to our Board of Education reports. If there's no reports, we realize that given the coronavirus, that committees may not have been meeting and that's fine if they have not been. However, for continuity, we're going to, we're going to, we wanted to keep this on our board agenda. Actually, we're going to turn right over to you, Board Clerk, the Board of Election Updates, Ms. Torres.
All right. Hi, good afternoon. The Board of Elections Updates. Right now, we're in the process of getting our school budget vote ready for June. I believe that we got moved to June 1st. I ordered ballot bags, five for each school, so that we could use that in the process of voting for paper ballots. We're not sure yet if Duchess County Board of Elections will give us voting machines in June. So right now, we have just the ballot bags for now.
Correct. How many do we have?
I bought five and they each hold 1,500 ballots.
And where would you be looking to, where would the district be looking to place those, the five?
The five would be where we do our elections, Morris, Warren, Clinton, Krieger, and the middle school.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Torres regarding the Board of Elections Updates?
Becky, can you, can you restate that again? Because we have, we have more voting sites than just our schools.
We have five, five schools that we do voting.
So we just do our schools, right?
Our schools.
Right, right. Now, what I'm thinking is usually what we do, what we've done in the past is we've gone to the other sites to put notices up to let people know that they have to go to their home school. Never mind. I got it. Thank you.
So for clarity, yeah, doing a regular election is different than a school board election, what a transcript is referring to. So, okay, great. And then here's the reality is that the board can decide whatever we want specific to the election for things that are not specific to law. So if there are constraints or parameters that are put in place and that the board has to make a decision on, we can do that as long as they're not things that are stated in statutory. And we'll deal with some of that as we see how this thing goes out with the coronavirus and if indeed, we will be able to have an election sometimes. Now, just for clarity, that June 1st, that June 1st date that was in the Executive Board, I believe it was Executive Board of 2013, that's, that's not a specific date. That is just, that was just listed there, that is minimally. Just for clarity.
I had, Madam Board President, a question?
Sure.
Yeah, I had spotted just a couple of minor inconsistencies in our policy regarding the elections, just things like, you know, deadlines for petitions and things like that. And I framed them in a text. I think I forwarded that to you and I believe it was going to go to legal counsel for review.
Yes, it's on the agenda, sir.
Oh, it is cool. Thank you.
Yes, it's on the agenda, our trustee, Risa.
Outstanding, thank you.
Thank you, sir. There's no, the student advisor, actually Becky, for our next meeting, if we can get in contact with our student advisors to let her know, out of respect for her and her position and her important role on this board, if we could, if we could let her know, she can plug in, it would be great.
Okay.
Committee, the board committee as a whole. Board Clerk, Madam Board Clerk, do you remember the date? There was an audit committee you had sent out a date. I don't remember the dates. There were two dates, I can look them up quickly.
April 28th. We have April 28th, I'm sorry, hold on a second. I have two computers, two laptops going right now.
Okay.
April 28th or May 19th?
Okay. So those were the two dates that were put out on that, the firm would like to meet with the board. You don't, we don't have to decide now, you can have time to take a look at your calendars and make a decision what's preferable. But please let our Board Clerk know exactly which is preferable for you and then we can, we can figure this out. Construction and Facilities Committee, trustee Long?
They had the meeting on Friday. I did not attend it. I actually had a doctor's appointment that I couldn't miss. I don't, Dr. Rosser probably has a better update for me as of moment. So I know we are meeting in two weeks. I mean, Dr. Rosser, please feel free to jump in because I don't have any other additional information.
Okay, no problem at all, Board Member Long, that we didn't issue on Friday. The committee has been working very hard to, you know, identify the best strategy to, to address our facilities and the need for a capital improvement project. What the committee has decided upon, given, you know, the unsettling landscape that the COVID-19 pandemic has presented, you know, counties and localities across the country and even across the world, that we will be actively still moving forward with a capital improvement project referendum. However, you know, the original capital project referendum that we were slating for a May 19 vote, we decided that it would be in the best interest of our community to postpone that into early fall. So right now, we're looking at a potential September referendum for, for our capital improvement project. As I mentioned, the work will continue, you know, we will continue to assess, we will continue to look at ways in which we can bring down the cost for the project. As I mentioned, you know, we have Mr. McDowell, who is now a part of the team, who has a lot of experience, having worked on the multimillion dollar capital improvement project in Buffalo, New York. He has joined the team and will be aiding us in being able to realize cost savings for the local share, as well as making sure that the project that we will be proposing and engaging in is a project that's going to be great for, for our school environments and then more specifically, you know, increasing our ability to strengthen our impact on providing children with a 21st century learning experience in facilities that reflect that. We will be meeting, as Board Member Long indicated, in the next week, excuse me, next week. And we're planning at the next board meeting to provide a more substantial update as to our activity around moving things forward for September.
Thank you, sir. We're going to move to the Curriculum Committee, trustee Martinez-Leffert.
The Curriculum Committee has not met since the 3rd of March. So I just went back to the minutes to refresh my memory. There are some departments, AP Psych, High School Social Security Teachers, as well as the kindergarten teachers at ELC that have presented some new curriculum and courses to the Curriculum Committee that are being reviewed.
Thank you. Health and Wellness, and then the Parent and Community Engagement Committee, trustee Clifford?
There has been no Health and Wellness Committee meeting. And if you remember correctly, at the last, the last report I gave, we were informed that the Parent Community Engagement Committee would not be meeting because of the Saturday Morning Lights program. And I have not received any further update as to whether or not we will resume committee meetings since schools closed and we aren't having Saturday Morning Lights.
And I can speak to that. One of the things that my team is doing, particularly those who have responsibility for pulling many of these meetings together, they're looking at online ways in which we can still continue with board business. So that is forthcoming about your particular committee.
Excellent, thank you.
Policy Committee, trustee Risa? Policy Committee, trustee Reece.
Sorry, the Policy Committee has not met, so no report.
Thank you. Safe Committee, trustee Long?
We haven't met, we haven't met since last month. There's really no other updates. We were looking at some, some policy changes according to some feedback that was given at board meetings, et cetera. But since this outbreak, I don't even know when our next meeting is scheduled.
Okay. And I just want to back up just a bit in sync with policies, since both mentioned policies. So, one of the things that we have talked about, looking at an external entity to assist us in updating our policy, whether it's the, the New York State School Boards Association or the, the BOSI. And at this juncture, we haven't made any decision. There's a, there's a process that's going to align it with this. And so, at this juncture, we have, and I think we're piecemealing it. There's, there's, I know that Dr. Watson, I believe that he has, Mr. McDowell is going to be looking at some policy pieces specific to Section 6000, which is a lot of the financial pieces. And I know that, as trustee Reece mentioned, he had looked at some of the pieces specific to the election, and there is going to be a policy change, which you are aware of because it's on the agenda. So, other than that, we haven't really dealt in, and then, of course, we, as a board, we collectively looked at Section 0000, which is the goals, they're not the pure goals and objectives, but they're the philosophy and the overall, the overview goals of the district. And so, those are going to be voted upon tonight and implemented. So, but as a whole, we have not, we have not looked into them. So, that's something that the board will continue to look into because we know that policy is paramount to, one, our role and function as board members, and then, two, to the, to the guidance and direction of the district. So, at least the areas that are critical, which are the finance areas, we want to make sure that they are in sync with what the State Comptroller's Office is mandating and dictating. And so, that piece becomes really pivotal.
Well, police, before you move on, I have a question about the Safe Committee. I know before the schools were closed, Coach Hodge and Mr. Murphy had a public, a public meeting to get input from the community with regard to the Code of Conduct. There was a second meeting scheduled, which I believe was, was ultimately canceled because schools were closed. I was just curious if anyone, if there was, what kind of turnout we had, if any, for that public sort of input into the Code of Conduct.
I can turn it over to Dr. Watson, but I do know that Dr. Watson mentioned that in his superintendent's brief. He mentioned those meetings and some of the, some of the feedback from that. But Dr. Watson, if you want to weigh in a little bit on that?
Yeah, I would need to look. There's been so much that's going on, but I have entrusted the team to make sure that that survey, to get input from the community, is posted. And if I recall from a meeting that I had several weeks ago, there was activity to post the information online. I'm sort of, you know, perusing on my second screen to see where I can locate it, which is, which is problematic. But I will make sure that where it's at, it's much more prominent so that we can then make sure that we're getting people's input. As I stated just a few moments ago, as related to the other committee, and looking at all the various committees in which I have staff members who are, who are facilitating those committees, you know, we will be looking at an online solution to be able to still engage our community in the very important business of the district.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to be very clear, though. The Safe Committee, as a committee, is different than what Dr. Watson had given Mr. Hodge the directive to do, specific to the Code of Conduct, to garner information specific to that. So, it's still slightly different into have, and then around, have a pulse around the culture and climate of the school district. They're two mutually exclusive things. I just want to be very clear. The Safe Committee is a directive, that's, that's a legal directive to save legislation, to save schools against violence in education, and they're two mutually exclusive things. So, I just want us to be very clear on that, that those meetings, from what I read in the superintendent's brief, that directive was very different. It was more culture and climate driven, and then Code of Conduct driven than the Safe Committee. Just, that's just for clarity for all of us. All right. The next piece will be the Common Council Liaison. So, the Common Council meeting will occur tonight. We plug in periodically to those meetings. I have continued conversations with, with the, with the mayor. I haven't spoken to him ironically in, in months, maybe not months, but maybe since, maybe the beginning of March, which is ironic. And a lot of times, I get a pulse from him on what's going on in the bridge. Dr. Watson has played a pivotal role as co-chair of the Children's Cabinet. So, and even though he's, the Children's Cabinet is one piece, the other piece in his interaction with the mayor because of the coronavirus pandemic, Dr. Watson has been in communication with him probably on a daily basis, or multiple daily, daily basis, multiple times daily. So, so there's been great interaction there, but specific to the Common Council at large, as the information has gone. There's, there's nothing to report that I'm aware of. Dr. Watson, is there anything that you're aware of that needs to be reported to the board?
Other than, it's my understanding that the Common Council is looking at creative ways, as we have found with conducting our meeting online. In my conversation with, with the mayor's public relations person, John Penny, indicated that they were exploring additional ways in which they can engage the public, as well as keep the public aware of the important business that's happening under the city of Poughkeepsie.
There, there is one thing I would like to say that does fall under this guise with the Common Council, because you just triggered Dr. Watson when you talked about his PR person. The US Census 2020, that piece is being driven by the city as well as the county in a concerted way. So, that's something that we can continue to push and to promote both in conjunction with the city, because they, you know, they're really pushing it, the city and the county. And I know the school district through Mario Johnson is also pushing that in a concerted way. So, that is just one piece that we can report out on. I did attend the, I did attend the US Census Bureau. They had a, a meeting, and I did attend that meeting. And so, it was quite informative, actually. One of the, I don't know if it was the state or federations, she came down. She, she works in the state, but she hired through the feds. So, she came and she spoke, and it was, it was an informative session. The Dutchess County School Board, there was a meeting, actually a virtual meeting, last Thursday. I was on the call, and I believe Michelle Martinez, Michelle, Michelle, you were also on the call, correct?
Correct.
Martineus Leffert?
Correct.
Yes. And so, they were, they were, it was a, it was a good session. They were talking about sustainability in education. And again, good, not a lot of member, not a lot of individuals were on the call, maybe, and it's difficult sometimes with this virtual medium, this virtual platform. I'm not always 100% sure. That's why I wasn't even 100% sure. I thought I heard trustee Martinez-Leffert introduce herself. But sometimes with this platform, you're not sure who's there and who stays on and who's not. But I think there were probably maybe 15 or so people on the call. And, but, but it was informative. And the good news is they're forging ahead. So, are there any other comments or questions specific to committee reports? Thank you so very much for, each of you very much for reporting out. We're going to move to our consent agenda for this special meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Well, first of all, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? So, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
Okay. Madam Board Clerk, roll the ball, please.
Dr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Reeser Clifford?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Dr. Watson?
Yes. Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved in totality. There are no walk on items, and there are no board, I'm not sure.
There's action.
There's action items.
There are action items. Okay, let me look to that. Okay, we have a couple of things here, actually. And we're just going to push through on these and, and address each one. So, is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 13.1, which is a revision to the school calendar?
Don't move.
Second.
Any comment, discussion regarding this resolution? Madam Board Clerk?
Dr. Reece?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez-Leffert?
Yes.
Mrs. Clifford?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Dr. Watson?
Yes, motion carries. Agenda Item 13.2, Educational Philosophy Policy Number 0000. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm just ecstatic that this is finally being done. This has been, this, this thing has not been updated since 1991. So, I'm excited that the board, in conjunction with the superintendent, were able to at least put these pieces in place. Dr. Watson also has some other, some other pieces that he, he's been working on and will be more concrete when it comes to goals and objectives. However, at this juncture, this is excellent to have in place for these pieces right here, to have this completed finally. And for our Board Clerk, for whom to be able to put them up and to, and to, to update this, this specific policy. Madam Board Clerk?
Dr. Reece?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez-Leffert?
Yes.
Mrs. Clifford?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Dr. Watson?
Yes, motion carries. Is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 13.3, Candidates and Campaigning Policy Number 2120.1? This is Dr. Reece had mentioned, had read through the policy, and he realized that there was a glitch in the numbers, of, of, of numbers that are needed for, for candidates and campaign. And so, the legal counsel, so legal counsel reviewed the information, and this is the amendment. Any further discussion? Madam Board Clerk?
Okay.
Did we make a motion?
Yeah, we didn't make a motion.
Oh, we didn't. Is there a motion to approve this, as, as read?
Don't move.
Second.
Dr. Reece?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez-Leffert? Mrs. Clifford?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
And Dr. Watson?
Yes, motion carries. Is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 13.4, District's response to the Office of the State Comptrollers? This is the corrective action plan. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
Any discussion? Madam Board Clerk?
Dr. Reece?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez-Leffert?
Yes.
Mrs. Clifford?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Dr. Watson?
Yes, I just want to thank Dr. Watson and his team for assisting in pulling this corrective action plan together. Typically, it should have been, it would have been done in conjunction with the board, but given the divisiveness of everything, it just made sense. They just pushed through, and they had the facts and figures and numbers and everything, and so they were able to put something in place that is beneficial. But I want the board to be conscious of that. This is something that should have been under our purview also, because ultimately, it's the board's responsibility when it comes to these pieces. Agenda Item 13.5, is there a motion to approve this agenda item?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Again, this is a response that was pulled together by the district, and again, it would have typically been done in conjunction with the board. And so, I want to commend Dr. Watson and his team for pulling this together for us also. These are the, these are the functions of the board, the role and function of a board. So, so these are things that hopefully in the future will be even more conscientious and conscious of. Any, any other discussion regarding this? Madam Board Clerk?
Dr. Reece?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez-Leffert?
Yes.
Mrs. Clifford?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Dr. Watson?
Yes, motion carries. So, those are all the board action items. As I said earlier, there are no walk-ons, which we have really moved away from, which is a good thing, as much as possible. We're going to move now into comments. We're going to do it in this order, please. So, once the individual speaks, just feel free to jump right in with your comments. We're going to start with, with Dr. Watson, followed by Dr. Reece, then Mrs. Clifford, then Mrs. Martinez-Leffert, then Ms. Long, and myself.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Board President and board members in our community who has been with us during these very trying times. And I would like to say that there's been a groundswell of, of public support for our children, which has been great. You know, our children are in a good place being here in the Poughkeepsie City School District. We have made significant progress in dealing with COVID-19-related changes that we've had to make. Of course, we as a school district have had the responsibilities of performing three functions per the governor's orders. One is providing continuity of learning for our children, in which our teachers have really come together to provide four weeks of instructional material for our children during the break. We have also made some significant strides with being able to guarantee that all of our students have access to a nutritious breakfast and lunch. And under the leadership of chef David Dunn, we have identified 10 locations throughout the city of Poughkeepsie in which we are providing those nutritious breakfast and lunch to children. We have also had the responsibility of providing childcare services for first responders and healthcare professionals. And in partnership with the Christ Episcopal Church, as well as Healthy Kids, you know, we are providing opportunity for any family who is a first responder or a healthcare professional, if you need to have childcare in order to do your duty in supporting those individuals who are ill due to the virus, we can help facilitate making sure that your children are in a safe place that is educated during the time in which you're doing your, your work. I would also like to say that the building principals in the district will be hosting principal fireside chats. One is actually going on right now at Waring, but there are more to come. We will have one at ELC on April 7th, Clinton, April 7th, Krieger, April 9th, Waring, April, excuse me, Morris, April 8th, PMS, April 8th, and PHS, April 7th. And then also, there will be one at PACE on April 8th. Clinton will also have a second one on April 9th, for parents who may not have been able to, to log in on the April 7th. And the purpose of those principal fireside chats, understanding that our community, particularly the most important partners that we have in the education of children, which be it our parents, they don't necessarily have the same level of access as they once did, given many of the social distancing policies that are in place. We are very mindful of that, which means that we are also looking at ways in which we can extend our communication- extend our communication to our our families. And the Principal Fireside Chats is an opportunity for us to be able to do so. We will be communicating with our parents who have students with exceptionalities. Um there will be a separate correspondence going out this week by Superintendent Assistant Superintendent Charlotte Manona, who will be providing clear direction as to how we'll be working and partnering with parents to make sure that the needs of their children are certainly met. I do want to to sort of point out that, you know, that um the groundswelling of support has not only been inside of the school district or on behalf of the school district. There's been a number of different partners, community members, as well as individuals who have stepped up and who have indicated that they would love to support. And by way of the children's cabinets, um there's been a lot of activity and continues to be a lot of activity that the mayor and I will be sort of sharing with the community within the next couple of weeks. I do want to to sort of share some um sobering um information. Um unfortunately, we have had a staff member um who has passed away um unrelated to COVID-19 from what her husband has shared with me. But I did receive word this morning that one of our staff members um has transitioned on. And we will be supporting that school community as best as we can, you know, given the social distancing restrictions. And also have staff members working diligently to see in what ways can we provide support to children who may have been in this teacher's class. I will also like to bring to the attention of um the community and the board members that one of our principals, Ms. Nadine Dargan, unfortunately lost her father and her grandfather this past Tuesday to COVID-related complications. So I say all that to simply say that as we are sort of dealing with this uncharted landscape and we are, you know, putting our arms around our children to make sure that our children are well protected, our staff members are well protected, as well as our parents are well protected, it's very important that we continue to be mindful of everything that that is going on so that we can make sure that we're taking care of ourselves as well as our loved ones. That concludes my comments, Board President.
Thank you, sir. Um one of the things, um I just want to interject with Dr. Ross, and again, I I believe in giving honor where honors due, it doesn't matter to whom. And I think my my track record has shown that. Um I the um, one of the reasons, I've been on this board for five years. And one of the reasons I think you talk about the groundswell within the community, one of the reasons I think that the groundswell is occurring in a concerted way is because of you being out in those streets. So one of your initial platforms was the Listening Tour. And I believe that because of the execution of that and you lining those up and sync with um some of your staff members, I know Natasha Cherry, she would be at those also, is that I believe that people heard you, they saw you, and and then all of the the singular meetings, I know people like the Dyson Foundation had had said to me that they've been trying to get into our district for many years to provide support and to help. And and it just never came to fruition. So um and I think it was my um trustee Martinez-Lefford, I I think, I'm not sure, so correct me if I'm wrong, um Michelle, if you did not say that, but I think um you had stated on one of our our attorney-client privileged calls that, you know, when when Dr. Ross was sneering out names and and just, you know, seamlessly speaking of people, um that that's more than a notion. That's um that's uh excellent PR. And I know through the superintendent's briefs, I know that through the revamping, um getting the team to finally revamp the the webpage, and that's something that we've been talking about for at least minimally uh the past three years since this board, this current board has been in place. So um so this groundswell, uh yes, it's a it's a result of, there's no, there's no person, it's an island unto him or herself. I I don't believe that either. I think that, you know, if everything is interconnected. But I do know that the the districts have, there's a different climate and culture in the community because um, you know, you have been out there and some other staff members have been out there. The board has always been out there. Uh the board has always been standing up for the clarion call and trying to get folks involved in things. So I just, I do just want to bring, just to state that. Um, Dr. Reeser?
Um, great, thank you. Um condolences uh to Principal Dargan for her loss. It was very sad to hear it and um and my condolences to to her and her family. Um Chef Chef Dave uh is uh one of many heroes, um a hero of heroes who are doing extraordinary work to serve our students um in a time of great need. So I'm um kudos and and thanks to um to Chef Dave uh and to all the staff, Dr. Ross and and uh and and his staff uh and all the faculty members for continuing to do the hard work uh in a moment when our students and parents and families need it the most. Um and uh so um I'm uh you know, deeply appreciate all the hard hard work that's being done uh to uh to keep the shift moving forward and keep serving the community uh in the midst of this crisis. Um I had I had a a concern about um the need with which we're moving towards a plan for uh to continue instruction. Um I I think, I I have been said maybe others um on the board might may also, I have a premonition that others may bring it up. I think what I'm gonna do is uh I'm gonna stop talking and let my more knowledgeable and and senior board board colleagues uh speak on that that issue. Um and I'll be listening currently because uh I uh I I know uh, you know, the administration and the teachers are are working hard to try to figure out solutions to provide instruction uh to to our students. Um you know, I just, I'm gonna listen a little bit because I'd like to learn a little more about how quickly we're moving toward towards continuity of instruction, towards implementation of a plan for instruction remotely going forward. Um and I just, you know, look forward to hearing more about that. Um and that could lose my comments.
Thank you, sir. Well, I'm going to then allow Dr. Ross to interject because the board will not have that information. It will come from Dr. Ross. So, Dr. Ross, could you speak specific to our trustee Reeser's questioning?
Yeah, there's a lot of activity that's happening as relates to us strengthening our ability to meet the needs of our children, um the educational needs of our children during this break. Um as many school districts um in the region as well as across the state have in place, uh we are are sort of behind in our ability to provide or to strengthen our approach to meeting the educational needs of children through some sort of online platform. So there is a committee that's inclusive of myself as well as other leadership throughout the district that have come together to begin exploring helping to transition um our student learning um to a online platform so that we can go deeper in our engagement um with our students. There are a lot of things that are still being worked out um with this. Our teachers last week and into this week, you know, are being trained um to be able to perform in this manner um as per the expectations. Um the building principals have also undergone and continue to undergo training related to to this online platform. There's a number of different things that we are looking at as a um committee as it relates to making sure that our students have devices in order to be able to access online instruction. We're also concerned in looking at ways in which we can provide um internet connectivity for those students and those families who may not have those in their homes. Um there's a lot of work that that's going on right now. And I can most certainly um be prepared to provide a a very comprehensive um presentation of all the various activities as well as everything that we're doing to meet the the evolving needs of our children. Our at-home learning packets were were developed with the thought that our schools would only be closed for a short period of time, two weeks. We then learned that there may be the potential that our schools were going to be closed longer. So therefore, our teachers put together at-home learning, self-guided at-home learning materials um for our children for the duration of one month. Understanding, and I just received word while we were on this board um call, that the governor has publicly made an announcement that schools will be closed until April 29th. And we're waiting to to get the executive order that will then facilitate our activity around that. It's very important that we as a school district are very mindful to the learning needs of our children and making sure that we have a educational platform in place where there is much more interaction with our students and our teachers so that our parents at home feel very much supported with the engagement of education of their children for the remaining part of this school closure. So as I mentioned, there's a lot of work that's going on. Um I most certainly can present a a much more extensive presentation on the variety of things that we're doing as a district, um providing greater opportunity for our board as well as our community to learn more about it. Our building principals through the fireside chats are going to be speaking about it. Um and um at the at the conclusion of what we're doing, we want to just make sure that our children are provided with valuable and meaningful instruction and that they're interacting with teachers much more on a larger basis than the current at-home instructional materials that were created.
Trustee Clifford?
Um so a a couple of things. I it there are so many people to be um, I think, acknowledged and commended and um I I hesitate because sometimes I think it starts to sound um not as authentic as it's meant when we keep saying, you know, Dr. Ross, you're doing a great job. And Chef Dave, you know, he's amazing. He's getting our kids fed and, you know, um first responders and and but there there's no less sincerity um in my saying it, just because I feel like it's, I I say it a lot. Um I am a, you know, I'm on, I'm on the board here. I work for another school district. Um I see what, I see it from both angles. So I see it from the the governance position that we play here. Um and I see what my fellow um staff and faculty are going through in the school that I work with. And quite frankly, um it blows me away. I don't think that um, I don't think that people have any clue as to what our teachers are going through right now, trying to um get up and running with the this new framework, with this new platform, with digital online learning. Um it's a learning process for them. I think um, you know, I I really want to acknowledge our teachers for the time that they're putting in. Um and, you know, there's, there's always a handful in any any place that you work, any organization or or whatever, but I I would I would not hesitate to say that our teachers are not only working above and beyond, but are also incredibly distressed um about what their students, because their students for them are their children, um are living with right now. And I also think that we need to acknowledge our children. Um this is a huge, um and I I keep thinking of it in terms of I have a teenager who's in high school who can rationalize and understand. And then I look at it from a perspective of, you know, I have a lot of friends who have young children, Andrew, like you do. And um and how they process this and how they, you know, now we're looking at the end of April before we go back to school. It's um, it's got to be incredibly difficult on them. And I know that's an incredibly difficult time for all of us. I just, um, I really just want to acknowledge our teachers and our students today. That's where I am today. Um and I've already, I've said it to you before, Dr. Ross, the amount of of um of time and thoughtfulness and and cooperation and everything that you're bringing to this. Um, none of us could have expected this when you came on in August. You had an idea of what you were getting into, but none of us knew it would be like this. Um and I just, I'm proud of, um, I'm proud to be a board member on this, on on our board with our school district. I'm blown away by what our community is coming forward with, what they're providing, what they're doing. Um and, you know, this too shall pass. It, we don't know when, but and we will all be stronger for it. So I just wanted to thank you and all of my fellow board members and everyone who works for this district and all of our students who are dealing with us right now.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Lefford.
Hello?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure to make sure I'm muted myself. So I'm not gonna rip myself but or repeat what everybody else has already said, but I just want to say thank you to everybody that's um, you know, really been involved in in helping everything move forward. Over the last few weeks, uh this is definitely a tough time as um a district, as a teacher, as a parent. Um but there's just a couple of quick questions that I wanted to um ask Dr. Ross. I know I sent an email earlier today, but I wanted to be more specific. Um is, you know, the clarity on, so, you know, as a parent um and also for parents out there that are watching or that can spread the word, is the clarity on the work that was distributed to students? Um I guess almost, you know, three and a half weeks ago. Um there wasn't really any clear distinction that that work was going to be graded. Um and then when I read the letter home to parents last Friday, I believe it was, stated that teachers are collecting that work. Um so it was, just as a parent, I was wondering, um because nowhere except for one packet of my children did it say that the the work was going to be collected. Um and since it's not really instructional work, because there's no teacher teaching the material, um I looked at it as being more enrichment work. So I was just a bit confused about that. Um also, I um, I know you stated in your comments a bit ago um about, you know, what the district is doing in order to move forward with providing instruction or starting digital online instruction um with students. Um but, you know, I'm wondering if there's any sort of that's in mind. Um and then lastly, you know, how are we planning on grading for the third marking period uh for students? Because the end of that would be approaching soon and then moving into fourth marking period. Um how are we, you know, going to expect students to get overall grades for the year?
So can you repeat the second piece? I I heard the first piece, which was about the at-home learning materials being graded. Second piece, you were kind of muffled. I didn't clearly hear that piece. And then the last piece was about marking periods and how students will be graded.
Correct. So the second question was, um again, and I know you already, um, you know, made a statement based on this, but I just wanted to again ask my question. Is, uh, you know, when will new instruction begin? Um and when will, you know, just if you have any sort of roundabout date? Um because it's, you know, it would be nice if there's some sort of schedule or expectation coming from the district um as a parent um and for other parents out there.
Correct. Okay, so for to answer your first question regarding the memo that, or not the memo, the letter I sent out to parents um this past Friday to give them an update on a variety of different things. Um the memo, or excuse me, the letter um was clear in that it just indicated that students should plan to turn in their work when schools reopen. It did not indicate that there would be a grading expectation on it. Um I have, having had, having had to put something in place with so such notice that myself and the committee really never had any conversations around what would be the expectations of the work, because the work? Because we heard on March Friday, the 13th, that in the afternoon, that we would not be opening schools for two weeks, that beginning that Monday. So we had to really scramble and sort of put things together in order to guarantee that our students would have some self-guided work. We had not had any conversations around expectations or grading. While I do know that many of the teachers at the high school are supporting students and are sort of grading papers and evaluating students' progress with the papers. We have not come to any sort of final decision as a committee on that. And given the fact that it looks now, although it has not been verified through executive order, that we will be out of school until at least April 29th, that is a agenda topic that myself and the committee will be addressing tomorrow. And I know that in some of the outlying school districts, they have moved from giving a numerical score to giving a pass bell. And we're looking into that option as well. The online instruction beginning, we were planning if we needed to. And it seems like, you know, once we receive the executive order indicating that schools will be closed through April 29th, that we will be starting the online platform as soon as a number of different variables come into play. Number one, we still need to acquire enough devices to make sure that we'll have access to it. As I stated when I was responding to Dr. Reeser, you know, we will also need to make sure that our students have the internet connectivity in order to engage in the online platform. These are topics that we're discussing and will be discussing tomorrow as a part of our, our executive committee work. To your last point, and I kind of addressed it with my first one, it has not been decided how we're going to handle grading at this point in time. That's another agenda topic for us to discuss. And as I mentioned, we are investigating how other school districts, you know, throughout Dutchess County as well as across the river are handling this. A lot of school districts, as I mentioned before, are using a pass bell sort of model in being able to support students being able to transition forward. However, we as a school district have not made a definitive decision as to what our model is going to look like. And once we are done analyzing that, discussing it, looking at the pros and cons as a committee, we will be communicating that not only to our teachers and our staff members, but most importantly, to our parents as well.
Trustee Martina Flipper, do you have further questions or comments?
No.
Thank you. Trustee Long?
I just have a very short comment. Everyone, be safe. If Bishop virus is down here, I've known several people who have either been infected that are hospitalized and respirators and, and/or just hospitalized trying to fight for their life. So be safe. That's all I have to say.
A couple of things I just want to say. Thank you. There's a couple of things I want to say regarding district-related things. First of all, there's a great concern, and I know that every single board member, including the superintendent, is concerned about our hourly employees. And I know that we're looking to put in place parameters for them. As Dr. Rossiter said, Poughkeepsie City School District is a family. And so as such, we want to ensure that the needs of our people are met. And when we look at the unemployment rate, when we look at, we talk about the children being fed, there's adults, you know, that they were dependent upon, you know, the salaries within the school district. And so, so we're very, very concerned about that. And I know that parameters are, are being put in place for that. I don't know exactly where they stand and how it's going to be 100% executed, but I know that's on a CEO level. So I know that, that those parameters should be put in place at some point. I know that there was a robo-call that went out, and I did get some calls from parents that we weren't 100% clear on. And, Dr. Rossiter, I know that you mentioned that perhaps if the robo-call will be retaped and there's additional information that needs to go out with that. So, so, so that's going to be good. I think it was only unclear, the robo-call was, because it was so short that by the time you tuned in, it was over. And then it's like, okay, what was that about? So Becky, you do an excellent job with these robo-calls and keeping us informed. And we super appreciate you for all of, for all of those efforts.
If I can, if I can just comment real quick?
Sure, sure.
So that we have, you know, the community and many people attentive. So the robo-call that went out was essentially sharing with parents that there was a comprehensive memo or a letter that I had drafted that shares updates in a number of different areas from the continuation of learning plan, access to technology, you know, us getting a sense of who may need some internet connectivity, sharing with families, student mill distribution, sharing with families childcare and first responder, for first responder and healthcare workers, information, bringing to the attention to our parents that we are quite aware that the communication throughout the district has been changed based upon our social distancing restrictions and providing them with updates on a variety of different ways in which we are seeking to improve our communications, sharing with parents updates on the pre-K through kindergarten registration process that was supposed to start when we received the closure, and sharing with them that I have staff members who are working to identify an online solution to start that process. And also sharing with our families that census 2020 is still very much important to the work that we're engaged in, not specifically as a school district, but the census information will have implications if it's not captured correctly on not only the city school district, but also the city of Poughkeepsie. And then lastly, sharing with our parents that we should begin anticipating schools to be closed beyond April 15th, which we learned today through the governor's public announcement, that we will be closed at least until April 29th. So I was just really sharing, wanting to share some, some critical updates with our families about what's happening within the school district as well as external to the school district.
Thank you. And then we know that these are trying times, I think, all across the board. And, you know, my heart and my passion is our students and kids. And so as I, and I've had this conversation with Dr. Rossiter and, and with other community, community activists, is I'm extremely concerned about students. I'm extremely concerned about students who are in homes where there's a high stress factor and the verbal and even physical abuse may be taking place. I'm extremely concerned as a board member for parents who, I just spoke to one ironically last night, and we laughed about it, but in some, in some cases, it's not going to be funny, for parents who are not in a position to, to teach their kids and they're embarrassed by their inability to teach their kids and, and to work with them. And even though it's, it's a form of enrichment versus instructional piece, it's still sometimes very difficult. The parent, the parents that I was speaking with yesterday were saying that, you know, that he's teaching, you know, the kid learned how to do a math problem one way and he only knows it from the way he learned. And she's like, "You're not doing it right. You're not doing it right." So there are those, and, you know, we laughed about it. It was funny. You know, he, he, he wasn't stressed by, you know, what it was. But in some families, that's not, it's not going to be a laughing matter. So there are a lot of issues outside of, you know, providing breakfast and lunch and that sort of thing. And I know that these are things that the school district is certainly aware of, thus Assistant Superintendent Manona putting in place some parameters to assist with this. I'm really concerned with the social, emotional piece. I'm concerned with the abuse, the abuse piece. I'm concerned with pedophilia. There's, you know, all of these things that will have a direct impact on our students because our schools, contrary to what some people think when they think about like school violence and stuff, our schools are probably the most safe haven for six hours of these babies' lives. And, and I, and I, I'll tell you, my heart just bleeds daily since this coronavirus thing hit because I think about all of these factors that can have an adverse impact on these kids. And not all of them, but a good number of them because of the stress factor. So I just, Dr. Rossiter, as, as the district continues to put in place parameters, and because, here's the other thing, is because so many services are closed, so for example, reporting of abuse, those offices are closed. You know, mental health places where there could be some, some interference that's run, those offices are closed and all minimal support is being given. So, and then, and then even medical needs of students, students that have allergies, students that have asthma, you know, there's so many things that are, you know, they're just out there for kids. And, and I, and I, you know, I just wanted to just say that as an individual board member, that these are things that, that haunt me nightly. Every time I land my, you know, nice bed in a quiet setting, I think about those babies and what some of them may have gone through during the day with those kids. So I just wanted to share that from my heart. There's nothing that needs to be done or said from a district perspective, but I just wanted to share that because that's where my passion is with, with the kids. That's the reason I'm a board member. And that's where my greatest concerns are. And, and I just wanted to verbally to say them. At this time, there's, there's another situation, Dr. Rossiter, I mentioned, our principal and then our teacher at Warren. There's another individual that has passed with the COVID, due to the coronavirus. It's, she's the long-term, she was the vice president of the Newburgh and Larsley School District Board of Education, a longtime board member actually, Shu Koko. And so collectively, if you don't, or mind, just out of respect, one for our board colleagues, one out of respect for our principal, who is one of three tenured principals in our school district, and then for our, our teacher at Warren School, a longtime teacher who was actually, Dr. Rossiter shared with me, was going to be retiring this year, which is, my heart just bleeds. She was going to be retiring, I think, this year. So, but, but, you know, she passed away, she's transitioned. So if we don't mind, if we can have a moment of silence for those three individuals and, not just for those three, those three that are directly in our faces, that we have a direct contact, connection with, but then for, for the many that have, that have lost their, their lives to this coronavirus. And then also a moment of silence for our students, not just in the Poughkeepsie City School District, but all across the world who may be adversely being impacted, more than just from an educational perspective, but from, as I stated previously, and so many other, mental health, emotionally, so forth and so on. So if we can just have a moment of silence, just know in mind. If there being no further comments, I just want to commend each of you. I want to say to my board colleagues, thank you so very much for your commitment and for your tenacity and, and for all that you do on behalf of this district and, and the lives of students. No one has anything further to say. The motion to adjourn out of, out of this regular, this special meeting on April 6, 2020. Come on.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you also very much. Becky, she will be in touch. I don't know if Dr. Rossiter's going to have any of another meeting or special meeting or anything because we're all in our wings, we're flying. However, I thank the board for being so patient and so extremely flexible with all of this. So I'm not sure. I don't even know when our next board meeting is, but we know that if, if need be, boards are going to come together for a special meeting so that we can get things done. So thank you also very much. Also, thank you to all those that were on the call. We had 28 people on the call. Thank you also very much for your time and your commitment to this district and this community. Take care, be safe, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.